...on Monday evening, May 22nd, 2023. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have eighteen items on this evening's agenda, a presentation, and three public hearings. So I will ask the clerk to please read Agenda Item Number One.
Minutes of the City Council Meeting, May 8th, 2023.
Counselor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion made in second to accept and place on file the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Oppose, the minutes are filed, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Two.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2024 operating budget as submitted by Mayor Vigent in the amount of $188,751,024, which represents a 4.57% increase over the fiscal year 2023 appropriation. Order number 23-108881.
Okay, this public hearing we've taken up in four stages. First, with the public speaking in favor, then questions from the public, then public speaking in opposition, and then any questions from the City Council. So I'll open the first part of the public hearing with public speaking in favor. Are there any members of the public speaking in favor? Any members of the public speaking in favor? Any members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I will close that portion of the public hearing. Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Questions from the public? Seeing none, I will close that portion of the public hearing. Any public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Any questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing. Agenda Item Number Three.
Now is the time for the public presentation from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council regarding the draft hazardous mitigation plan for the City of Marlborough.
Martin, come on up.
Good evening, and thank you, Council President and members of the council for making time for this presentation on the city's hazard mitigation plan. I do have a PowerPoint, a fairly brief one, hopefully, trying to keep this under ten minutes or so. And so let me begin by asking the next slide to be moved. So let me just give a little context. This is a plan that the city is doing because it's part of actually a national program through the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA under the Hazard Mitigation Act of 2000. The program envisions every city and town in the country having a plan such as this. And in fact, the City of Marlborough does have a plan, but they have to be renewed every five years or so. And so we're actually in the process of making the 2023 update to the plan that you currently already have. In fact, we were here around five or six years ago talking about your previous plan. So one of the things to keep in mind, one of the benefits, this is not a mandate from FEMA. It doesn't say you have to have a plan, but there's a very big incentive to having one. And that is, having an approved plan makes the city eligible for some fairly substantial FEMA grants to actually do projects on the ground. Infrastructure projects, drainage projects, that sort of thing, under their hazard mitigation grant programs. So that's really the carrot for doing it. And I guess I would say as a planner, there's intrinsic value in taking stock of your hazards and thinking about how you're managing. So it's not just that there's grant money at the end of the rainbow, but that's also one of the incentives. Can we move on? So to distinguish this, FEMA has a lot of programs, and they're part of Homeland Security. Ever since 9/11, there's lots of different programs. And I want to sort of distinguish this particular plan. It's about natural hazards. It's not about homeland security, terrorism. It's not about even human-caused hazards like chemical spills. There are other plans to do with that. The city has other plans, the main one called the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. And this plan is honing in on what the impacts of natural hazards are for the city and what the city can do to make itself more resilient and less vulnerable to those natural hazards. When it comes to natural hazards, this plan covers all the categories of the types of natural hazards that could affect the city. And while flooding sort of takes the leading role in this because it's the most common impact, the plan looks at all the categories of hazards that you see on the screen here. So some of them may have a very low probability of occurring, like earthquakes, but we talk a little bit about everything that at least potentially could happen in the city. Why don't we go? So the philosophy behind FEMA putting this whole program together is to try to break what they found to be a cycle of, you know, development, going into areas that are subject to hazards. We have hazards that destroy buildings and destroy infrastructure. There's insurance, yes, and there's federal aid, but that costs something. And in places where there's like almost like a cycle of rinse and repeat, rinse and repeat. And so they're looking to break the cycle of recurring disaster by interrupting the cycle. Now, there's going to be some large natural events that we won't have control of, or we may not be able to completely eliminate vulnerability. But the more we can reduce the vulnerability, how serious the impacts are, both to property and to human life, the better off we'll be. Why don't you go to the next slide? So hazard mitigation is kind of a broad term. It's an umbrella term. It's not one thing. It's not one thing. And this is a list of maybe six types of activities that you consider to be under the rubric of hazard mitigation. There are actions to prevent. Part of those, think about where do you put your development in the first place? Do you put things in harm's way when you know there are areas that may be? So that gets you into some of your land use and development regulations and that sort of thing, and just how development happens on the ground. There's property protection, recognizing that we have a lot of history of development over decades and even centuries in this part of the country in areas that are subject to flooding and other hazards. So we have to coexist with those hazards as well as we can, and sometimes protecting the property that's there already in a place that we now know to be hazardous, but we're probably not going to be able to do much about that. It's there, so how can we best protect it? In some cases, that might be in more extreme cases, like building elevations, or even just elevating the utilities within the lower area or the basement of a building that might be subject to flooding, so the degree of damage that occurs to that property will be reduced. Public education is a big part of this because of what actual individuals, property owners, residents, small businesses do to manage their own properties can also help reduce the hazards, for folks to be aware of what the hazards are and what resources are available. Protection of natural resources, and I know the city has very good local ordinances around wetlands and floodplain, and it's those kinds of things to sort of let Mother Nature do the most we can to buffer from storm events and to take up some of the impact. And structural projects, and here's where you get to, there may be a need, in most cases there are in most communities, to upgrade things like drainage facilities, stormwater, and water and sewer and that sort of thing. And here's where some of the projects that might be on the city's agenda to think about in the future could potentially be funded by those grants I was talking about a minute ago. So that's one of the, sort of, the big-ticket items that could be a larger project, but there also could be funding available for some of those. And finally, emergency services protection. The idea that the first thing you want to make sure you protect is the capabilities of your own emergency services. The last thing you want is for there to be a windstorm or a flood, and the first thing that goes out is actually the capabilities of your emergency services to actually serve the public. So making sure those are hardened, making sure those are not vulnerable to natural hazards. So how do we put this plan together? Well, first and foremost, the city has a local hazard mitigation team that they put together. And Mr. Fred Flynn is in the audience here today. He was the coordinator, is the coordinator, it's still an ongoing team, very capable. I want to thank him very much for all the time and effort and thoughtfulness he's put into it. And he's called together a team of half a dozen or so, the major departments in the city, in public works and conservation, et cetera, GIS, to have input into the plan of very specific data and knowledge from the city. And if you see my agency, your original planning agency, was brought in to help actually collect the data, do some of the GIS mapping that is the basis of the plan, and to actually draft the plan for you. We will also, we have put on two public presentations. This is actually the second of two public presentations. The first one was a few months ago in February, hosted by the planning board. And so finally, the draft plan, after the review period that we have this for this draft, this up now, will be then turned into MIMA and FEMA, the Mass Emergency Management and the Federal Emergency Management Agencies. Each of them will review the draft plan. There are very specific standards for what has to be in these plans, and they will sort of check all the boxes and make sure the plan meets all the requirements. Once they have done so and said the plan is good, it will actually come back to this body for a vote of adoption, as it did last time around five years ago or so. So let me just take a few things about what's in the plan. This is a map that gives you an example. First thing we do is identify what some of the hazards are in the community. The local teams, this is of the local knowledge, how the local team comes in. They've identified areas that have drainage and flooding problems. Some of the areas identified on blue, in blue here. And also, we have the FEMA information of the flood insurance maps in the kind of more light-colored blue around here. So there are a number of things that go into this, identifying where there are areas that may be at risk. And other areas in the city that we talk about are areas that may be subject to wildfire risk, some of the forested areas and that sort of thing. Go ahead. The plan, as I mentioned, is a multi-hazard for all categories of hazards. So a couple of examples here. This map is of the earthquake risk, various zones of earthquake risk, all of which are in the relatively low range compared to nationally, but there is a relative, and Marlborough's kind of in the middle range of this. Looking at nor'easters and winter storms, which is the record of quite a few of them we've had just in the last decade or so. Go ahead. And we look at things like extreme heat. We look at drought, and we've had three droughts since 2016. The one in 2016 was the worst drought we'd had since the early eighties. So drought seems to be coming back onto the docket in recent years more so. The risk of wildfires in open lands, and extreme precipitation. And some of these events, like extreme heat and extreme precipitation, appear to be climate-driven as well. So we're talking about not only the trends we're looking at now, but how some of these things might become more extreme or worse in the future. So, we can go on. So looking across the community, the other thing we get very specific about is identifying and mapping a list of what we consider the critical facilities and the critical infrastructure. And actually, the local team identified 155 sites. Those are mapped, and you can't see it at the scale, but if you look at your plans, see it very closely, the little green dots throughout these maps, and there's a number by each dot that corresponds to an inventory table. You can look up and see what that site is. And in fact, this iteration of the plan for 2023, the update of your previous plan, added more sites to the list. I think the previous plan had 107 sites, so quite a few more were added by the local team in this iteration of the plan. So finally, get to the sort of the pièce de résistance, which is what the plan is all about, is a set of recommended actions that the city can consider over the next few years that will help to increase your resilience and help to reduce their vulnerability. And so there's a wide range, and I'm not going to read this long list, but I just point to, and you can take a look when you see the plan itself, to get the flavor, the spectrum of the kinds of actions. Some of them are structural projects, looking at what the first one listed here, and looking at dams. Some of them are more things like prevention, like using open space to prioritize areas that would be reducing flood risk, looking at regulatory tools, floodplains and wetlands updates, and then looking at some of the other hazards, winter hazards, geologic hazards. What are some of the things you can do about those, even though they aren't as common? There's something to think about and to consider. Wildfire hazards, drought hazards, all of them are in here in the plan in some form or the other. There's more emphasis on flooding because the city is actually more subject to flooding than any of the other kinds of hazards, but they're all listed within there. So finally, this is talking about where we are in the final steps of the process. Now that we have a draft plan, this plan is actually available online for the public on our website, here at mapc.org, website slash resource library slash Marlboro Desk HMP, which stands for Hazard Mitigation Plan. We have a dedicated email address for folks to be able to send questions or comments at marlboroughhazardplan@mapc.org. And so what will happen next? The plan is up and it will be available. We're asking for folks who might want to put in comments or questions to do so by June 16th. And because we're aiming to get this plan all wrapped up by the end of June, so we'll want that last couple of weeks of June to see what comments come in for the committee to consider those and make any final revisions to the plan before the end of that month. What will happen next, after the plan is completed and turned in, MIMA and FEMA, like I said earlier, will review the draft plan. If they have any comments or questions, they'll let us know. If we need to make any revisions based on their comments, we will. And then once they're satisfied with the content of the plan, that's when it will come back to this body for adoption. Then the city will offer a formal letter of approval that will have like a five-year timeframe. Your plan is officially adopted on this date until five years later from that date. During that five years, you'll be eligible for FEMA grants, and FEMA won't be bothering you about updating your plan again for a few more years. So I hope I haven't overstayed my welcome.
Mr. Pillsbury, thank you very much. You want to put up the last slide, then, Mr. Currie?
Yes, there's the resource library. Our little question is what's wrong with this picture, but if you have time for that or you want to think about it.
So councilors, any questions for Mr. Pillsbury? Counselor Oram.
Thank you, Mr. Pillsbury. We go back a little ways. I don't know if you remember me or not.
I do, yes, sir.
Thank you for your help in Ashland as well.
That's right.
Couple concerns or goals, as they're noted in the plan, and one is to make sure we reach out to the non-English-speaking communities. Through those grants, is there availability to get pamphlets and information available through a grant so we can reach out to those communities?
I think there would be. You know, I didn't mention it, but in addition to the FEMA grants, there's also a very important state grant that the city is actually already eligible for, not dependent on this plan, and that's the MVP, Action Grants, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness. And actually, they have a very strong emphasis in that program on what they call environmental justice and equity in these plans. So that's the kind of thing that they would look for, more than just having some brochures, but maybe having a whole sort of outreach strategy and program. And I recommend you think about something like that, because as we know, there's a significant population here. We did actually send out a brochure about this meeting. The flyer that you may have seen was translated into Spanish and Portuguese as well. But the plan itself is a long document. It's really not yet translated. That's something beyond what we could do with the whole plan. So something like, something like an outreach program that maybe touches not just on this kind of a hazard plan, but other activities of the city in, you know, managing your resources, wetlands, parks, et cetera, might be something that would be very worthwhile. And I think that MVP grant, that state grant, is probably the best option for that sort of thing.
And I'll reach out to Mr. Flynn on where he's going, because I'm sure he's already looking at these items and so forth. Two items that stood out for me was generators for all of our municipal buildings. So I hope it wasn't the police station, but if they don't have a generator, we need to start working on that immediately.
Those were listed, and we got from the team where those were needed, yes.
Yes, and it's concerning, so hopefully we'll, as we all know, if we see an incident at least twice or three times a year, might it be a storm? Might it be a brush fire? We had one of the biggest brush fires last year, and we're already in a brush fire season again.
Right, and actually, Mr. Flynn gave me the information on all, to his credit, he went back into the records for the last five years on all the brush fires, which is a lot of records to search through, and they have to kind of be manually done. Spent a lot of time, Mr. Flynn, with that, I appreciate it. And we put that in, we put a summary of that in the plan, and we talk in a little more detail about that brush fire in the desert. In the desert?
Yes, that's what they call it.
Which, you know, it's just exemplary of the kind of thing, when you have a drought, these areas become more vulnerable, and it doesn't take much. It's usually an inadvertent thing, not usually, not usually someone intentionally, but it's often people go out and just have campfires and, or just have fires in the woods and get together and don't attend it well. So, yeah.
And just one other, and obviously, the snow removal, if we ever get a few blizzards together, where are we going to take the snow? And I'm glad that was there. But the other question, the more important question, in my belief, well, they're all important, is the continuation of operation plans. We tried to get involved with that last year, didn't go too far with it, hopefully to, being reviewed pretty soon in operation oversight. But does this plan here provide funding to help out with continuation of operation plans?
Since this is a pre-disaster mitigation plan, not an emergency response plan, I'm not sure if this one does, but there are other FEMA grants that have a focus on emergency response. So somewhere there would be funding available for that kind of activity, yeah. We can take a look to see where that might be.
Well, thank you for your presentation. Nice to see you again.
Good to see you, yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And we'll be working with Ashland again soon.
Thank you, Counselor Oram. Any other councilors? Any other councilors? Counselor Ducey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just one of the references that you talk about as far as possible FEMA funding to help with the Westside Fire Station, would that be available for significant funds? Like, what would they be covering?
You know, for a fire station, I'm not so sure that's what that grant is intended for. It might be able to cover some specialized equipment, like if you needed a brush truck, brush fire truck or something that was related to the hazards.
And obviously, a generator, too.
But just the station itself, I think, is not necessarily a FEMA-type of a grant.
Okay, because it was on the list, so.
So, yeah, and let me make a good point about that, and that is that we put everything on the list as a goal for the community, whether or not it's fundable by FEMA. We don't want to be limited to only things, because there's a fairly narrow range of things they will actually fund.
Okay.
And there are other important things that you don't want to lose track of just because they're not funded by FEMA. But good point, it can maybe create the impression that FEMA pays for all these things, not necessarily all of them.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Certainly.
Thank you, Counselor Ducey. Counselor Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you so much for the presentation. I know a lot of work went into this, and I look forward to continuing to review it. I know you made a comment about the high rate of flood risk in the community. I'm also curious if you could maybe just touch on briefly the urban heat island effect. I know that that's a concern across Massachusetts and other communities, and I was just wondering, from the work that you all have already done, what you see kind of being some of the strategies. I know you had some of the goals, the tree ordinance as one example, and a lot of the other mitigation, but if you could just speak to that a little more.
Right, and actually, it doesn't show in this slideshow, but in the plan itself, the series of maps, there's about a dozen maps. One of them is actually a heat map, and it shows the hotspots, the parts of the city that are more vulnerable to high temperatures and a heat wave. And those obviously are the more paved areas around parking lots and larger areas of pavement and less vegetation. So that's something that MAPC developed a method for mapping that, based on infrared satellite imagery. And that, so you'll see that, and there's actually quite a few of those hotspots around different parts of Marlborough. Some of them are around this area, because you're a little more densely developed here, but some of them are along 495 and some of the bigger, mostly where you have parking areas, larger parking areas for commercial office, retail, et cetera. Yeah, and I think that the recommendations are trying to get at that by talking about how can we use more, how can we incorporate more trees into our landscape design, preserve the ones we have, and with new development, build that more into the process around, like have more trees into the parking lots that are built and that sort of thing. And by the way, they have co-benefits from heat to also stormwater management, because if you have those trees, you usually have places where more stormwater can be absorbed and recharge the groundwater, so absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I know there's also a concern, too, across Massachusetts of private residences and removal of trees and how that affects the tree canopy as well, so definitely thinking about where the city already has ownership of property and public lots, and also what are residents doing themselves, and how can we support them.
So that could be part of public education. I mean, you can't obviously directly regulate the trees. Well, through the Conservation Commission, there are some things that can be regulated. But basically, that may be better left to public education as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Pearlman. Anyone else? Any other city councilors? So again, councilors, this is online, you all have a hard copy. Mr. Pillsbury's asked for comments by June 16th, that applies to the public as well, and we'll get a shot at the final version about a year's time, less than a year or so.
The final version will be put together by the end of June.
End of June, right? So we'll see.
I mean, to submit it to MIMA and FEMA, right.
But we'll get it back for a final approval, right?
Yes, and it won't take that long. After we submit it to MIMA and FEMA, I would expect it back in maybe 60 to 90 days.
Okay. All right, anything else? Mr. Pillsbury, always a pleasure to see you. Thank you very much. Nice job. Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Well done. Agenda Item Number Four.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment from Attorney Brian Falk. On behalf of Marlborough Apartment Partners II LLC to Chapter 650 Zoning, Section 36, the Executive Residential Overlay District, to increase the cap on the number of multifamily dwelling units from 475 to 950, order number 23-108872.
Again, this public hearing we've taken up in four stages. First, with the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant, then questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and then questions from the City Council. So we'll open the first part of the public hearing with the public speaking in favor. Mr. Falk. Mr. Montelli, good to see you.
Thank you, President Ossie. And councilors, for the record, Brian Falk, attorney at Myrick O'Connell, 100 Front Street in Worcester, here on behalf of the petitioner, Marlborough Apartment Partners II LLC, the owner of land affected by this proposed zoning amendment. This land is part of the Executive Residential Overlay District, which is under development by Post Road Residential as the Green District. As mentioned, joining me from Post Road Residential is our principal, Andy Montelli. We are excited to come before you with the start of plans for Phases Three and Four of the Green District community. This is the version of the Green District that was approved by the council in 2019. When Post Road sought enactment of the Executive Residential Overlay District, the proposed ordinance did not have a cap on multifamily dwelling units. Post Road planned at the time to develop the project in four phases over several years. As part of its deliberations on the overlay district, the council added a cap of 475 dwelling units. The city wanted to see how Post Road developed Phases One and Two and consider an expansion of the Green District at a later date. If you've visited Phase One of the Green District, which is known as the Borough, you have seen an incredible multifamily community. This community has set a very high bar for multifamily projects in the city and the region with unrivaled indoor and outdoor amenities. In addition to the Borough, construction is now underway at Phase Two of the Green District. We believe we have shown the city what Post Road can do, and we're now looking at initial plans for Phases Three and Four of the Green District. Phases One and Two took up all of the 475 units that are allowed in the overlay district. For Phases Three and Four, we're seeking an amendment to increase the cap on multifamily dwelling units from 475 to 950. Those additional units would come over two phases that are shown on the right of this rendering. We envision a very similar community in terms of size and quality as the Borough. We're also seeking clarification that mixed-use developments are allowed in the overlay district. We are considering a retailer or commercial component as part of Phases Three and Four. Now going to turn to Andy Montelli to talk to you a little bit about Post Road's vision for the project. Andy?
Thank you, Brian. My name is Andy Montelli. My company is Post Road Residential. We've been here in the past talking about Phases One and Phase Two. Brian touched on a few things I was going to mention, so I'll move forward a little bit. This is the first phase of our Green District project. This is the Borough, 235 units, and it's been extremely successful. I'll talk about that in a second. What I'd like to start by talking about, though, is why we chose this area and what was on our mind as we started building here. And we have a very specific point of view about the kinds of places where we want to build. And very simply, we try to put ourselves in the city's shoes when we come before a community to ask for permission to build. We want to build in places that make good sense, that we can all agree are places where development ought to happen, and where we can build without negative side effects. We've developed, for example, a lot of old industrial buildings, which were eyesores in the community. We bought the old Charleston Chew Factory in Everett and turned that into a wonderful community. We've bought many old factories and redeveloped them. But in Marlborough, it led us to this area. Do you mind just, I'm sorry.
Brian's got it.
Yeah, some pictures of the interior of our community. Our goal when we develop is to create places that feel more like boutique hotels than apartment communities. If anybody was at the event last week, I think you got a sense of just what this place feels like. It's a very warm, very wonderful community. Let's keep going, Brian. Right here, right here, let's go back to that. So we came to this area, which we've heard called the Quiet Corner. This is our site. Give me, using my fingers.
Andy, no, you've got to keep the microphone with you, otherwise the folks at home can't hear. You can take it out if you'd like.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Andy.
Sorry, apologize. We have a 48-acre site right here, 40 acres of which are in City of Marlboro, eight acres are in South Borough. And what we were sort of intrigued about when we came here were who our neighbors were. Our neighbors are Kens, Suburban Propane, TJX, Quest, Whole Logic, IPG Photonics, and now, congratulations to the city, Moderna, coming soon, which is super exciting. One of the other things that was intriguing to us is that the closest single-family home is 1.4 miles away. It's on Sandini Road off of Forest. So, we're pretty sure those people don't even know we exist. So we have this site that is surrounded by commercial uses, not near any single-family homes, and from a traffic standpoint, which is very, very unique. The red dot is the Borough, the first phase that's under construction. Let me do this again. The second phase, this is actually nearly complete, it's where we had the event last week. The second phase that's under construction is right here. And the site's really fascinating from a traffic point of view, because all of the traffic that's generated basically does one of three things. It goes back onto the interchange to 495, or it goes out through Cedar Hill into South Borough, or it comes up to Simarano to Route 20 for shopping and entertainment and restaurants. So, we found this site that has really no residential neighbors. It has amazing access to the transportation system and a very low impact. Just to demonstrate a little bit about how low the impact of this site has been to the community so far, Phase Two, which is now under construction, is the biggest earthwork project that Post Road's ever had. Phase Two is a very hilly site. At one end of the site, we had to cut 18 feet, and at the other end of the site, we had to raise the site seven feet. A characteristic of our projects is sites need to be fairly flat. And we had to move 30,000 cubic yards of material. I had to think about how to present what 30,000 yards is, but if you take a football field 18 feet deep, that's 30,000 cubic yards of material. Now, if this had been dirt with the big equipment these guys have, that's fairly easy to move. However, we had 30,000 yards of rock to cut out. And we were extremely close to our neighbors, Stonegate, an apartment project right here, which I actually developed 20 years ago before I started my own company. So, in this part of the site, we had 18 feet of rock to cut out, maybe 100, 150 feet from where people were living. And you do that by blasting. We hired a great blasting company, but the first day, there was a complaint from, from Stonegate. The mayor's office called us up, we pow-wowed with our team, we figured out what we had to do to adjust. And after that, for the next six months, that it took us to blast and crush the rock, which is extremely loud, six months of that going on, there were no other neighborhood calls. Nobody called the city, nobody called anyone. It was a very, the process went very smoothly, which just demonstrated to me that there's just very little impact that we're causing to this, to this area of town. Neighbors weren't disturbed, we have no traffic impacts, we have a very low demand on city services. We plow our own roads. We got away without that this year, I think. We haul our own trash, police and fire, you know, we don't, we don't see them. And so this felt like a site that made sense for us and for the city to see developed. Now, our job is to create great places for people to live. One of the things that's, ah, I'm going to come back to this in a second. One of the things that's just always fascinating to me when we build these communities is to look at where people come from. So, because there's always people coming in, don't know their neighbors. People coming into these communities are coming in cold. So far, we've leased two-thirds of the first phase. We've had people move from Logan, Utah, Columbus, Ohio, Edgertown, at least that's on Massachusetts, Raleigh, North Carolina, Phoenix, Arizona, New York City, Los Angeles, Fort Worth, and Dallas, in Amarillo, Texas. People come from all over to live here. And what happens in those cases is they don't know their neighbors. So, I learned a lesson when I was starting this company 11 or 12 years ago, when our son graduated from college and moved to New York City. And he and two college buddies moved into a very nice Avalon High Rise. And after a month or so, my wife and I went to take the guys out for dinner. And we got off the elevator and we look around, there's a ton of apartment doors, and I asked Thomas, "How many neighbors have you met?" He said, "Dad, we haven't met anybody." And these are three young, sociable guys. And I realized, that was an amazing lesson for me, because I realized, when I was, just when I was starting this company, that just building a great building isn't enough. So, we kind of developed this theory of hardware and software. We build great buildings, that's the hardware. But the part you don't see is the software. And those are the events that we have that allow neighbors who move from many different places across the country to meet each other. It's why, when you come to the Borough, you'll see a golf simulator. This weekend, Saturday, it rained, there was a golf tournament on the golf simulator. 30 people played. It's why we have free beer in the community, so people can get to meet their neighbors over a social beer. It's why we have, you know, bartenders come in every month and teach folks how to make a new cocktail. The proof of our success is Google reviews. I'll come back to this in a second. Our Google reviews, I think we have 55 reviews, is a 4.9. Now, I looked at hotels in New York, I looked at hotels in Boston, I looked at the Ritz-Carlton and the Four Seasons, no 4.9 reviews. I looked at restaurants in Boston, trying to find a place that had a 4.9, nobody has a 4.9 review. We get 4.9 reviews and we're charging the highest rents in the marketplace. We've, these people know that they have to be taken care of and they expect a lot. And even paying a lot of money, they give us great reviews. And so, I think we've built a community that has very few impacts for the greater city, but, which is beloved by the people that live there. We built the most green project along 495. Brian showed the trail system. This is the half a mile trail system that we built through the woods, a path through the woods, so people can embrace those wetlands. There's 1,000 live plants inside the building, because that's how many plants it takes to change the CO2 of the building, of the amenity space every day. There's a list of 20 green features that we can give you that demonstrate, that in fact are on our website, that demonstrate what we've accomplished as, as a green community in the Green District. Brian mentioned, well, it's kind of apropos, you just had your budget meeting. Let me talk just a bit about fiscal impacts. The Borough, which we saw, in terms of one-time fees and permits, paid the city about $1.8 million. The Lodge, which is now under construction, paid the city about $1.9 million. Together, I think the property taxes on those two places are going to be about $1,750,000 a year. So this is substantial recurring benefit to the city from these projects. And if we build two more projects, I expect those numbers will at least double. We built a place that people love to live. The second phase, the Lodge, which is now under construction, even better. I'm absolutely convinced it's even better. I don't know how we'll make Phases Three and Four better, but we will. We have, we have time to think about that. This is the biggest investment we've ever made in the city, and I've been developing for 35 years. I can't think of a place that I'm happier to put my money and my partner's money. And we're grateful to be here and we're grateful for the time we've had, and we look forward to being able to build two more communities here in the city. I'll sit down if there's any questions. Joe Peznola, our engineer, John Schiper, engineer, John McFadden from Post Road are all here, we'll be able to answer them for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
Just going to wrap up briefly. At this stage, before the council, is just the zoning amendment. If the amendment passes, we would then enter several phases of additional local and state permitting. From the council, we would need an amended special permit. We'd also need an amended site plan approval, which would have significant input from the city's site plan committee. The project will also need an amended order of conditions from the Conservation Commission and a modification of our state NEPA permit. Unlike the first time we came before the council, Post Road is now a known entity in the city and part of the business community. I, I think you've seen that Andy has really over-delivered here, creating a beautiful project with significant benefits to the city in terms of smart growth, natural resource protection, and municipal revenue. We hope to continue that approach with Phases Three and Four. Happy to address your questions, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you, Attorney Falk. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors? Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just a couple of comments and questions first is, Phase One, the Boroughs is absolutely amazing. You did an absolutely outstanding job on that. Never thought I could use a fob to get a beer, but.
You can get two beers.
Yeah. Question, what's in the lower corner? You said it was going to be mixed retail?
Yeah, this is, this is all. Yeah, the lower right-hand corner is what Dave's referring to. We know we want this project to be mixed-use. We don't know what that use would be right now. Hopefully retail, I'd love to see a great restaurant there, but that lower right-hand corner is, is a placeholder, to be quite frank. It's, it's, it's a commercial spot on what we call the hot corner, the busiest, busiest part of the site.
Yeah, absolutely. Used to be a softball field there.
Exactly.
But yeah, no, I think this is an amazing addition to the city and wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Council Dusset. Council Orham?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your presentation. I had a chance last, two weeks ago, to see your facility, very nice. A couple of questions. Affordability, you mentioned they're willing to pay the price for the place. Are there any units that are affordable?
Yes, sir. 10% of, of both Phase One and Phase Two are affordable.
Okay. And impact, you mentioned impacts limited to fire, police, you said not too much as it relates to that. What's the impact to our schools on the two-thirds that are already populated? And how many apartments are those, the two-thirds, what's that right now? Is it?
Yeah, we're.
About 300?
No, there's 235 in the community, there's about 160 that are, that are now leased. We checked that last week, there are seven schoolchildren. And, but some of them came from other communities, some of them, some of the, two of those families moved from other apartment communities in town, so that's not a net addition of seven, it's a total of seven.
And in questioning that, what do you offer? Is it one to three-bedroom units?
Yes, sir. Oh, exactly, one to three-bedroom.
And.
Predominantly one-bedrooms, for the most part, are mixes, one-bedrooms. Maybe 35% of the units are two-bedrooms, and I think 5% are three-bedrooms.
That's all my questions for now. I do have to take into account, if we're allowing someone to go 100% more, who will be here next to determine why we let you do it and not someone else? So I have to weigh all that out. As your attorney knows, there's more people than just you developing in Marlboro, so it's one of those things I have to take into consideration. But I do compliment you on a really nice facility that I visited. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Orham. Any other questions from the city councilors? Council Perlman?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you both for the presentation. I also got to see the facility, and I know I got a tour when it was still being built, and it is very beautiful, and I'm glad there's residents coming from all over. Just a question, I guess first on the map, are those orange lines supposed to be like the trail network? I know, okay, so is there an intention to expand that in the proposed additional phase?
Yes, thank you. The first, the orange lines you see in the first phase total, just about half-mile, 2,500 feet. The proposed trail on the right side of the street adds 3,500 linear feet, so we'll have over a mile of trail if, if this all gets done. And what we'll next talk to the Conservation Commission about is, we ran very strong Wi-Fi out to the trail system, so that what we have the opportunity to do is to create little seating areas out there, aderent chairs, rockers, hammocks, that people can just sort of chill out into, you know, check email or just experience the, the, the site.
And then I know Council Orham mentioned some of the bedroom breakdowns. I know this is an early projection, but is the intention to mimic the current bedroom status on the additional proposed buildings?
Yes, the first phase was designed pre-COVID, and so, so the second phase is designed in the midst of COVID, and the, the bedroom counts about the same, but what we've done is to make about half of the units have a small home office, just a work-from-home space, so, so, so we can accommodate that for folks who aren't working in their real office five days a week.
That makes a lot of sense, definitely, to have, you know, some work-from-home space as well. And I know the schoolchildren was brought up, and I know we've seen that some of these developments are not necessarily the ones that are having the most schoolchildren. I guess I'm wondering what the duration you think someone lives in your property is? You know, typically, I'm assuming it's a lot of young professionals, they might get married, have children, so there could be a duration of time where that impact is down the road, but we wouldn't necessarily see it right when they're moving in. So I'm wondering, is the intention that people live in this kind of 10-plus years, or this is a short term that they do and then they buy a home? I guess I'm wondering, given the rents, what the, I guess the market is for those individuals and their duration in your project.
Yeah, the, on average, somebody will stay in an apartment a year and a half to two years and then move. And that's a, it's a national average, it also applies to everything we've seen and developed in Massachusetts.
Okay. No, that's helpful, I think, for us to know, because I don't know if we've had that question, you know, for other developers, kind of knowing what the cycle is of people living there. My other question, obviously, it was mentioned, it is a big increase. You know, I, I see the vision and I definitely commend the work that you all are doing. My concern is really, you know, we've been advocating as a council and a city to really get that Westside Fire Station, and so I would be, I think, nervous to continue to build on this side of the city without really bolstering up those services. I know money has come from that to help into the fund that we have, but I guess what would the phasing look like to even build this out?
Yeah, it's a great question. We probably wouldn't start the third phase for three years. We've got to finish the second phase and, and get it substantially leased before we'll be able to go to the capital markets and demonstrate that there's demand for a third phase. So, the second phase is, you know, just, we just started framing, we won't have units ready for 18 months, it'll take us another year to lease it up, so, you know, we're probably two and a half, three years out before we would start the third phase.
Okay, that's really helpful. I know that wasn't necessarily mentioned in the presentation, so that's good context for everyone else.
And, and, I apologize for interrupting. If the third phase is two and a half, three years out, the fourth phase could be another two to two and a half years beyond that. So, I mean, it might be the end of the decade before we're, we'd be done out here.
Okay. Yeah, and just, I know, I'm assuming this is going to go to Urban Affairs and have further review, but just some things I, I think would be interesting to have prepared for that would be, you know, you mentioned there are minimal impact to police and fire, if there's some data to support, maybe how many calls are coming to that area? The city particularly, just given the number of residents, I think that would be really useful for us to have for information. And, you know, I think as you're building out a potential phase, I think it'd be interesting to see what public use is available. Is there a space that can be rented within the facility for the public? You know, what does the trail access look like for the public? Because this is a huge use, obviously, of private purchased land, but I think it's, it's helpful when the rest of the city can engage, and this isn't like an isolated community where everyone's meeting each other, but they're not necessarily integrated with the rest of the city. So, just some food for thought, I'm, I'm sure there'll be more discussion, and, and really appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Perlman. Council Dumas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, Andy, how are you? I know that we worked a lot, quite a bit together during Phase One and Two, and I appreciate all your feedback, and, and you're very responsive, you're, in my eyes, as a work counselor, a developer that we love to see, just because of your responsiveness, you care about the community, and I greatly appreciate that, especially this project of this magnitude. Council Perlman talked about the phases and when you want to get this done. Councilor Pearlman talked about the phases and when you want to get this done, which was my question, but I guess to follow up, you said about three years, so when do you think the special permit, I know this is zoning, it's not a special permit, so you usually have two years for that special permit.
Yeah, we would like to, if we get a favorable vote, we're going to start design and we're going to begin that process now. I think some of the state permits are going to take us, you know, a while. And between the state permits and the need to get Phase Two demonstrably leased, so we can finance it, finance Phase Three, you know, it's going to be a few years.
Sure. And my other question is that you said that there's eight acres in another community, so how does that play into effect with this project? Do you have to do permitting and all of that as well, or will that hold up the project?
Yeah, there's a small portion of the property in Southborough, but none of the development area that you see is in Southborough.
Can you, if you were on the map, that...
Sure.
Sorry, so it's all this area up here?
Oh, so it's even further beyond, okay.
Yeah, so the Southborough line runs right through here.
Okay.
Our zoning and our zoning compliance is completely in Marlborough, Southborough's not part of it.
Okay, excellent.
We have eight acres there, we haven't as much lifted up the phone and talked to anybody in Southborough since we've owned this land.
Excellent, well, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Dumas. And then Councilor Robey.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is the public hearing by the city council, you will be for the planning board on June 5th for that public hearing. Once that happens, we get information from them, we will see you at Urban Affairs. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Robey. Any other questions from the councilors? Any other questions from the councilors? Any other questions from the councilors? Seeing none, I close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this is in Urban Affairs. Mr. Falk, Mr. Montelli, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agenda item number five.
Now's the time for the public hearing and the application for modification of assigned special permit from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of Lincoln Street 431 LLC to amend an EMC sign permit to add non-EMC panels to an existing freestanding sign at 431 Lincoln Street, Order Number 23-108889.
This public hearing will be taken up in four stages. First, public speaking in favor, then questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and then questions from the city council. So we'll start with public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant, Councilor Falk.
Thank you, President Austin. Counselors, for the record, Brian Falk, attorney of Myrick O'Connell, 100 Front Street in Worcester, here on behalf of the applicant, Lincoln Street 431 LLC. With me is manager Bill Camuso. We're seeking an amended signed special permit to add non-digital panels to a digital LED sign that was approved by the council in 2021. So this is Mr. Camuso's Shell Station, corner of Lincoln and Pleasant Streets. The proposed sign that we're proposing would be part of this pylon sign at the corner of those two streets. This is another image of the sign. Council approved the digital LED gas price panels in 2021 that's required by the sign ordinance. The lower panel, which is now blank, that white blank at the bottom underneath the price panels, was previously part of this signed special permit, it was advertising fuel. And this is the new panel that we will be looking to add in that blank space, changing out that bottom panel to advertise the food options in the convenience store on the property. Karine's Pizza and Deli has been operating inside the store for a few years, and it would be helpful to the business and to the public to have this panel on the pylon sign. You should have in your materials a draft decision that I put together that would amend the signed special permit. We believe the council can make all of the requisite findings under the sign ordinance for this amendment. Happy to take your questions, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Attorney Falk. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Councilor Orham.
More curious than anything else, and I don't think it will be, but the sign you showed, will that have the opportunity to be changed, like hourly? I know we went through this with the pharmacies years ago. What's the president's, what are you requesting? You requesting just that one sign, or will it...
It's just, it's a non-digital panel, just a typical panel, but the prior decision showed a different panel, so that's why we're seeking an amendment. But it's not digital, it wouldn't change.
So it'll stay as shown?
Correct.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Orham. Councilor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Attorney Falk. Question, will that panel be internally lit?
Yes, it will.
So will that be constantly lit, or will it be going out as the close of business?
During business hours, like the other signs on the property.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Irish. Any other questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this is in Urban Affairs. Thank you, Attorney Falk.
Thank you.
Agenda item number six.
Communication from President Austin regarding request for the mayor to submit a supplemental appropriation to the fiscal year 2024 budget to fund the proposed salary increase for the assistant city clerk and add back in the part-time clerk.
Councilor Robey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would request that the clerk read the letter, please.
Dear Honorable Counselors, at a meeting of the City Council Finance Committee held on May 16, 2023, the Finance Committee voted to request the mayor to submit a supplemental appropriation for the fiscal year 2024 municipal operating budget as follows. Add $4,590 to the city clerk assistant, city clerk line item 1610-50290. In furtherance of a proposed amendment to City Code Chapter 125, Section 6, Salary Schedule, to adjust the salary for the assistant city clerk. The salary ordinance was duly advertised in the Metro Rest Daily News on May 15, 2023, in compliance with the requirements of the City Charter, Section 23, ordinances, et cetera, to be published, and is ripe for adoption by the City Council on May 25, 2023. Add $17,600 to the Elections Department Part-Time Clerk Line Item 1620-50141. I appreciate the unanimous support of the Finance Committee in this matter, and ask that the City Council vote this evening to respectfully request Mayor Viggen to fund the part-time elections clerk and the proposed salary ordinance for the assistant city clerk, both which are deemed as necessary expenses in the office of the city clerk. Sincerely, Michael H. Austin, City Council President.
Councilor Robey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to approve and further to refer the communication to the mayor with request that he submit to the city council funding for the assistant city clerk, line 1610-50290, in the amount of $4,590, and the part-time clerk, line 1620-50141, in the amount of $17,600, both of which are deemed necessary expenses in the office of the city clerk.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the motion carries 11-0. Agenda item number seven.
Communication from the mayor regarding a transfer request in the amount of $1,974,642.32, which moves funds from and to various accounts as outlined to cover expenses for certain departments for the remainder of fiscal year 2023.
Councilor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have communicated with the city auditor, Smith, and the mayor. I was certainly anticipating these coming down this evening. The mayor did brief us a little bit during the budget season. My motion would be to approve the transfer request in the amount of $1,974,642.32, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the year-end transfers, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the year-end transfers are approved, 11-0. Agenda item number eight.
Communication from the mayor regarding a transfer request in the amount of $1,440,000, which moves funds from the Undesignated Fund to the West Side Fire Station Stabilization Account.
Councilor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank the mayor for saying this down. Motion to approve the transfer in the amount of $1,440,000, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the transfer for the West Side Fire Stabilization Account, any discussion on the motion? Councilor Robey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to remind councilors that this money is from Phase Two of the project that we just heard about.
That is correct. Thank you, Councilor Robey. Any other discussion on the motion to approve the transfer? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the transfer is approved, 11-0. Agenda item number nine.
Communication from the mayor regarding the appointment of Jonathan Friedman to the Commission on Disabilities for a three-year term from date of council confirmation.
Councilor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President, refer to personnel.
Motion made and seconded, refer to Personnel Committee, any discussion on the motion? Councilor Dussette.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I do want to make reference to the late passing, the quick passing of Cheryl Susie, who was on the Committee, Commission on Disabilities for many years, I worked with her for a long time. It was a surprise to have her pass, and she definitely left a mark on society, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Dussette. Any other comments on the motion to refer to Personnel Committee, all those in favor? Opposed, it's going to Personnel, 11-0. Agenda item number 10.
Communication from Assistant City Solicitor Jeremy McManus regarding the application for a special permit from Conderstone Engineering on behalf of Trombetta Family Limited Partnership to prevent an existing contractor, landscape contract yard located in the LI district at 655 Farm Road in proper legal form, Order Number 23-108824B.
Councilor Robey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to accept and place on file the communication from the Assistant City Solicitor and to move the special permit down to item number 18.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the solicitor's communication and move this down to agenda item number 18. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it's going down to number 18 and filed, 11-0. Agenda item number 11.
Communication from Attorney Sam McCannan on behalf of SUCIU LLC DBA Exella Storage regarding a request to extend time limitations until 10:00 PM on August 22, 2023, and the application for a special permit to add additional storage units to a non-conforming storage facility located at 846 Post Coast Road East within the Wayside District, Order Number 23-108823B.
Councilor Robey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the time extension, and thank him for sending it.
Motion made and seconded to approve the extension till August 22. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the special permit is extended to August 22 by a vote of 11-0. Agenda item number 12.
Communication from the Department of Public Utilities regarding a petition of Enstar Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy, for approval of its 2023 energy efficiency surcharges for effect July 1, 2023.
Councilor Brown.
Thank you, President Austin. Move to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is filed, 11-0. Agenda item 13.
Minutes of Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Councilor Dussette.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the Boards, Commission, and Committees.
Motion made and seconded, accept and place on file all the minutes, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the minutes are filed, 11-0. Agenda item 14.
Claims.
Councilor Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to refer the claims to the Legal Department.
Motion made and seconded, refer the claims to the Legal Department, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the claims are going to Legal, 11-0. Reports of committee. Councilor Irish, you've been busy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee met on May 15 and May 16, 2023. Both meetings convened at 6:00 PM. The May 15 meeting adjourned at 11:20 PM, and the May 16 meeting adjourned at 9:01 PM. Both evenings, we had one item on the agenda, it was Order Number 23-108881. Mayor Viggen's proposed FY 2024 operating budget in the amount of $188,751,024. Chair Irish read the mayor's May 4, 2023, letter submitting the budget for review and approval in this, in the amount of $188,751,024, representing a 4.57% increase over this year's, primarily due to a continued increase in utility costs, asset of Valley Regional School, contract services, and added staffing. The Finance Committee reviewed each of the items listed in the budget summary over the course of the two meetings, together with the mayor and municipal department heads, and proposed the following adjustments to the mayor's budget. On a motion by Council Pearlman, seconded by Councilor Orham, the Finance Committee voted 5 to 0 to refer to the city council Mayor Viggen's FY 2024 operating budget with proposed reductions in the amount of $940,100 as listed in the below table, resulting in amended FY 2024 municipal operating budget in the amount of $187,810,924, and further recommends that the mayor be requested to submit the budget amendments listed in Table on Page 3. Some of the impacts of the Finance Committee's FY 2024 budget adjustments, the mayor's proposed FY 24 budget of $188,751,024, less the above adjustments of $940,100 equals a new FY 2024 budget of $187,810,924. This represents an increase of $7,307,825 from FY 2023, or an increase of 4.04%. The mayor's projected tax impact provided in the budget package was an increase of $262 for the average single-family house. This was based on a residential shift, commercial CIP shift value of 1.40, which resulted in a corresponding residential tax rate of $10.96. A reduction of $940,100 from the mayor's submitted budget will reduce the projected tax on the average single-family house to $235. The mayor emphasized that these are estimates, and the actual tax amplifications will be determined in November. The Finance Committee voted 5-0 to request the mayor submit a budget amendment that contains the following. Add $4,590 to the city clerk's line item 1610-50290. Add $17,600 to the Elections Department Part-Time Clerk line item 1620-50141. Submit the salary ordinance for the head adult service position in the Library Department. Submit the salary ordinance for the program outreach coordinator position in the Library Department as well. And that is the end of my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Irish, anything else?
Yes, Mr. President, I will be asking for a motion to suspend the rules to remove Order Number 23-108877, Assistant Clerk salary ordinance from the Finance Committee, please.
There's been a motion to suspend the rules for the Assistant City Clerk salary ordinance, all those in favor the suspension? Opposed, the suspension carries 11-0. Councilor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to place Order Number 23-108877, Assistant Clerk salary ordinance on the next city council agenda, please.
Motion made and seconded to replace the Assistant City Clerk salary ordinance on the next city council agenda, we will have a special meeting on Thursday, May 25, at 7:00. All those in favor? Opposed, it's approved, we'll have a special meeting on Thursday, May 25, at 7:00 PM to address the Assistant City Clerk salary ordinance. Councilor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Service Announcement, Finance Committee will be meeting on May 25, 2023. We will take up the following items on that evening's agenda. Transfer request to fund the Marlborough Fire Department's bargaining agreement. Order to set the spending limits on the city's four revolving funds. Transfer request in $94,037.90 to fund the 1% inflation bonus. And the last item will be a transfer request to fund the substance use prevention coordinator. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Irish. Any other reports of committees? Agenda item 15.
Order Number 23-108841, the application for renewal of a junk dealer license from Antoine Bittar, DBA Hanush Jewelers, 601 Donald Lynch Boulevard. Recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve.
Councilor Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the junk dealer license for Hanush Jewelers, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the junk dealer license is approved, 11-0. Agenda item 16.
Order Number 23-108843, an application for renewal of a junk dealer license from Gerald Dumas, DBA Dumas &amp; Sons, Secondhand Store at 65 Mechanic Street. Recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve.
Councilor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President, I will recuse myself from this vote.
Please let the record reflect that Councilor Dumas will not be participating in this vote. Councilor Landers.
Again, thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the junk dealer license for Dumas &amp; Sons. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is approved, 10-0 with one abstention. Agenda item 17.
Order Number 23-108871, application for renewal of a junk dealer, secondhand dealer license, and associated waivers by TVI Inc., DBA Savers, at 222A East Main Street. Recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve, with conditions and waivers.
Council Landers?
Again, thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the junk dealer's license for Savers. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the junk dealer license for Savers is approved, 11-0. Agenda item 18.
Order Number 23-108824B, the application for a special permit from Connerstone Engineering on behalf of Trombetta Family Limited Partnership to prevent an existing contractor/landscape contractor yard located in the LI District at 655 Farm Road. Recommendation of the Urban Affairs Committee is to approve as amended.
Council Robie?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move the recommendation of committee, but I have amendments that I would like to read to request that they be included. These have come from the Assistant City Solicitor through Attorney Bruin. I move to amend the special permit, decision on the special permit, paragraph on page 1, line 2, add "and" landscape contractor's yard after contractor's yard. Findings of fact, paragraph 3, line 3, add "and" landscaper contractor's yard after contractor's yard. Findings and actions, paragraph C, line 3, add "and" landscape contractor's yard after contractor's yard. Condition 7, line 1. Can I just combine all these together?
Yes.
Condition 7, line 4. Condition 7, line 7. And condition 8, final paragraph, line 3, add landscape contractor's yard area after contractor's yard.
Motion's been made and seconded to amend the special permit to add the language that the solicitor and Attorney Bruin have recommended. Any discussion on the amended language? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to read the conditions with the amended language in them.
The City Council pursuant to its authority under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, and the zoning ordinance of the City of Marlborough hereby grants the applicant a special permit for a contractor's yard and landscape contractor's yard at 655 Farm Road, as shown on the plans filed, subject to the following conditions. Which conditions shall be binding on the applicant and its successors and/or assigns? One, construction in accordance with applicable laws. Construction of all structures on the site, if any, is to be in accordance with all applicable building codes and zoning regulations in effect in the City of Marlborough and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and shall be built according to the plans as may be amended during site plan review. Two, site plan review. The issuance of the, of the special permit is further subject to detailed site plan review by the Site Plan Review Committee in accordance with the City of Marlborough Site Plan Review ordinance. Any additional changes, alterations, modifications, or amendments as required during the process of site plan review shall be further conditions of this special permit. Subsequent site plan reviews shall be consistent with the intent and conditions of this special permit and the plans submitted, reviewed, approved by the City Council as a special permit granting authority. Three, modification of plans. Notwithstanding conditions 1 and 2 above, the City Council of the Site Plan Review Committee may approve engineering changes to the plans, so long as said changes do not change the use approved herein or materially increase the impervious area of the use, reduce the green area, or alter traffic flow, all as shown on the plans. Four, incorporation of submissions. All plans, photo rendering, site evaluations, briefs, and other documentation provided by the applicant as part of the application, and as amended or revised during the application hearing process before the City Council, and all the City Council's Urban Affairs Committee are here and incorporated into and become part of this special permit and become conditions and requirements are the same unless otherwise altered by the City Council. Five, operating hours. Hours of operation are limited to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. Access for emergency business use, including for uses such as snow removal and sewer breaks, is permitted at all times. Six, stormwater and erosion control management. The applicant and its successors and/or assigns shall be responsible for ensuring that, that the uses on the site do not contaminate stormwater runoff, and shall ensure that the uses on the site do not cause adverse stormwater impacts to abutting properties. Seven, traffic pattern. All tenants and visitors to the contractor yard area, landscape contractor yard area, are to enter and exit via the southern driveway shown on the site plan. Sinage shall be erected on the northerly access of the site at the easterly edge of the ice cream and retail parking area, prohibiting the retail customers from entering the contractor's yard, landscape contractor's yard areas, and also prohibiting the contractors from entering the ice cream and retail parking areas. Sinage shall also be erected on the southerly access of the site at the easterly edge of the retail parking area, prohibiting retail customers from entering the contractor yards, landscape contractor yards areas. Eight, screening. In accordance with Section 650-18A48 of the zoning ordinance, the applicant shall, within a period of time to be determined during site plan review by the Site Plan Review Committee, install screening, screening to screen areas of the site used for the storage of vehicles, equipment, and materials from adjacent properties as follows. A, south property sideline, 1, number 20 and number 30 Broad Meadow Street, existing mature screening. 2, 40 Broad Meadow Street, existing six-foot privacy, private fence and longer storage building. 3, number 56 Broad Meadow Street, existing fence is a mix of six-foot privacy fence and a six-foot black vinyl coated chain link fence, along with an existing arboretum space and deciduous trees. Applicant to supplement screening with arboretum and other plantings to infill gaps with existing screening. As shown on the site plans, the material stockpiles abutting the fence are to be removed. B, rear property line, existing dense vegetation provided, dense screening to Wayside Athletic Club. There is a vacant parcel of land approximately 60 feet wide between the site and the Wayside Athletic Club. Applicant shall remove all gravel surfaces and containers within the required seven-foot setback and install plantings as shown on the site plan. The gravel surfaces shall be removed and replaced with mulch or other covered, other covered determined by the city's conservation officer to discourage future encroachments into the area. C, northern property line, northern property line about 667 Farm Road and 665 Farm Road. This line includes existing a six-foot stockade fence, fencing, and a six-foot privacy fence. An existing vegetated buffer has been planted over the past several years, as shown on the site plan. The Site Plan Review Committee shall require additional planting or screening, as needed to ensure adequate screening for the abutters. Defined barriers between the landscaped areas and the contractor/landscape contractor yards shall be provided as to protect the landscaped areas from being encroached upon. The vegetated screening and fencing shall be maintained and replaced, augmented as needed over the years to ensure that the proper screening as provided is always provided. Nine, leased areas. 16 containers are provided, one to each of the 16 leased areas, and are utilized to provide tenants with a space to secure and protect their daily and seasonal equipment. The containers are used to store hand tools, lawn maintenance equipment, snow equipment, and similar equipment. Storage of unregistered vehicles is not allowed on the site. Tenants are not allowed to perform vehicle repairs and/or maintenance on the site. Only the 16 leased areas are permitted, as shown on the plans, which shall be clearly defined in the field. Only the trailers shown on the approved plans are permitted. Applicant may, as needed to accommodate existing and future tenants, change or modify the leased area provided that there are no more than 16 leased areas. The total leased area and the number of leased areas, 16, and/or the number of trailers cannot be increased, expanded, without an amendment to this special permit. Ten, outdoor storage areas. In accordance with Section 650-18A48 of the zoning ordinance, the outdoor storage, outdoor storage of vehicles, equipment, and materials shall be located on the impervious and otherwise dust-free surfaces. Materials shall be stored with sufficient protections to avoid damage to landscaped areas and to avoid interference with the proper functioning of the stormwater infrastructure. Storage of propane, chemicals, or hazardous materials is not allowed. Eleven, open space. Within a period of time to be determined during site plan review by the Site Plan Review Committee, the areas of open space, as shown on the plans, shall be vegetated with grass and additional trees and shrubs to be added to help provide shade to these open areas. These areas shall remain open and shall not be used for storage of any material or equipment. During the site plan review process, the open space area, gravel area, and storage areas shall all be clearly defined and eliminated on the plans with provisions that these areas are clearly defined by fencing or barriers or other on-ground methods for easier enforcement and management of the site. Twelve, noise and air quality. The applicant and its successors and/or assigns shall comply with the city's noise ordinance and shall comply with all the state and federal requirements governing air quality and emissions. Thirteen, lighting. Exterior lighting at the site shall be down or facing from three 15-foot posts shown on the plans, with the lighting plan for the site plan, for the site to be reviewed and further conditioned during the site plan review process. Exterior lighting at the site shall be shut off outside of operating hours, except for lighting necessary for security and emergency access. Fourteen, compliance with applicable laws. The applicant and its successors and/or assigns agrees to comply with all municipal, state, and federal rules, regulations, and ordinances as they may apply to the use. Fifteen, recording of decision. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, the applicant and its successors and/or assigns at its expense shall record this special permit in the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds after the city clerk has certified that the 20-day period for appealing this special permit has elapsed and no appeal has been filed, and if applicable, before the applicant is applied to the Building Commissioner for a building permit. Upon recording, the applicant shall forthwith provide a copy of the recorded special permit to the City Council Office, the Building Department, and the City Solicitor's Office.
All right, councilors, you've heard the amended conditions on the special permit. Is there any discussion on the special, amended special permit? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Council Nathan?
Yes.
Council Robie?
Yes.
Council Dusset?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Austin?
Yes.
Council Wagner?
Yes.
Council Dumas?
Yes.
Council Irish?
Yes.
Council Landers?
Yes.
Council Orem?
Yes.
And Council Perelman?
Yes.
11 yeas, sir.
The special, the amended special permit for the Trombetta Contractor/Landscaped Yard is approved, 11 in favor and none opposed.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed, we are adjourned at 9:20. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.